Great day, though. The first item of business we have is to recognize a person here in Supervisor Vanderpool's district. I'm actually going to turn the time directly over to him to let him have the honors.
Good morning. Today, we have a wonderful teacher with us in the audience who we are going to honor today. Her name is Shay Williams Hopper, and she is an ag teacher at Tulare Western High School, and she has been recently honored with a pretty substantial award from the Western Region, or the National Association of Agriculture Educators. She is the Western Region winner of the Outstanding Young Member Award, and she was also recognized in June as the California Agricultural Teachers Association Award winner, throwing her application to be forwarded on to the national level. So she has really done a lot of wonderful things in Tulare and for Tulare Western and just Tulare agricultural education in general, and so we're very appreciative of what she has done for the folks in not only our county but specifically in my area. So Shay, would you please join me up front here in the well, and I'd like to present you with the proclamation honoring you for your wonderful service and this great award that you've won.
There's a proclamation honoring you for the award that you've received and for what you've done for agricultural education in Tulare, so thank you very much again.
Supervisor, one more picture. Shay, you have one more picture.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Our next item of business is public comments. If there's anybody wishing to address the board on an item that is not on today's agenda but under our preview, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Seen none, we will move to Board of Supervisor matters, and I will start to our far east this time, Mr. Innes.
Is this east?
It's west, isn't it?
No, I don't have my compass on me.
No, that's south.
Well, the only thing that I would like to talk on a little bit is on these grant program that we're just starting out with for a new season. Got $100,000 out there, 20,000 per district, and I'm going to be working hard with my district to see that we get some of these grants put into the places where they're needed in our community, and I'll be looking forward to working with our community through the media to get the word out to the different nonprofits and so that they can take advantage of this and also help the young people at risk in our communities. So I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you. Mr. Ashida.
Last week, I met with a solar company, and apparently there's a substantial amount of interest in the Central Valley, in particular Clare County, of installing new facilities for solar energy. I believe they met with several other supervisors looking at different sites, and I know that they're looking at least in three districts, probably all five districts if the information were to be known. This tomorrow, TCAG, a group of us are going up to the San Joaquin Valley Air Board and meeting with them to talk about air quality as it pertains to rail. But we've discovered that this Rail-X in Delano is now moving 110 cars of produce every week out of the valley to the east coast, and they guarantee a delivery in five days. What this equates to is over 2 million truck miles taken off the road every week from the San Joaquin Valley just on the produce we're shipping. So it does have a definite impact on air quality, so we will be meeting with them tomorrow. That's all I have.
Just to point out, to talk about the step-up programs that we've been involved in, Cutler Rossi is planning another one on September 3rd with an emphasis for parents. Jed of our office has been actively involved in that, and there's also interest again in having a second event in Ivanhoe. We'll be meeting with them to plan that. There will be an unveiling this next week in a Rossi of a mural that was part of our grants last year, mini-grants last year, and a wall that was frequently hit by vandalism is now has an attractive mural on it, and hopefully that will stop that sort of behavior in the future. So, you know, we live in some difficult times, but it's always good to celebrate those sort of things that happen and that are positive in our communities, and so I'm pleased to announce those. Thanks.
Supervisor Vanderpool.
First thing, I would just like to reiterate my congratulations, even though Shay has already left. Very exciting to win that award on a national level for a teacher here in Tulare County regarding her efforts in agricultural education, so again, congratulations to Shay. Also, like Supervisor Innes, I will be encouraging several organizations, specifically the schools and other groups in the community, to apply for the step-up grants that are going to be available this fall. I think it's a great program, and we've sure seen a lot of positive outcomes on the children in the communities with those funds that have been available. And then also, like Supervisor Ashida, I met with the solar company down in Early Mart, and they also have interest for a potential location in Pixley as well, so that also not only brings economic development to those areas but to our county and especially during a much-needed time, so it's a very positive thing, but that's all I have today.
I would say that brings us closer and closer to a Starbucks. Am I not correct?
Well, you guys promised me a Trader Joe's in Pixley, so we'll see that happen first.
I thought it was Starbucks and Trader Joe's. Okay, I have nothing else to add to this this morning, although I will make this announcement a few times, we do have Spanish translation available. The headphones are in the back, and Kathy is waving her hand, has those headphones, so if you need those for translation, that's where they are, and Miranda here will, on the front, will be translating for us, so if you have that need, we'll announce that as we go through our meeting today. We have a few items to pull from the consent calendar. Item number nine was actually continued last week to August 25th, so that is pulled as it is already scheduled for the August 25th meeting. We are going to move item number 18 to an untimed item. Are there any other corrections or items that need to be pulled from the consent calendar by members of the board?
If not, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the consent calendar absent items nine and 18.
I'll second that. Okay, we have first by Supervisor Worley, second by Supervisor Vanderpool. Counsel, yesterday you mentioned there might be one small correction to an addendum. Is that not necessary?
I think we can do it as a cleric lawyer. You're talking about the closure of my offices.
Yes.
Yes, only two of the three offices will be closed.
Okay, great. Then, anyone from the public wishing to pull consent calendar item? Cast your votes. Unanimous, okay, we will now take up our item number 18 as the untimed item.
Good morning, Chairman Cox, members of the board. The item number 18 is an introduction and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending Part 1 of Government and Administration, Article 11 Planning Agency, Section 1-03-154 of the Tulare County Planning Commission. Establishment and memberships. The whole purpose of the code amendment is to create the opportunity of the Board of Supervisors to appoint an alternate to the regular group of the Planning Commission Board. Existing now, we have seven members of the commission. We've had one vacancy for a while. The board just recently appointed that vacancy, and in the past nine months, we've had some difficulty in getting the quorum of the regular commission members to be attend, to attend the meeting. This provides an opportunity to have an alternate, very similar to LAFCO Commission, where the member can observe and learn, and when the commission's seat is vacated because of conflict of entrance or absence or non-appointment, that alternate may step in and serve as a regular commission. The reason the item was pulled from the agenda, in addition to creating the alternate commissioner, we took this opportunity to try to correct the language, because as you know, the RMA was created some years ago, and the county code is still going through some transition of cleaning up some language. And so what is being proposed as part of that is to actually delete the Planning and Development Department and Director language out of that and refer it to the RMA Director or designee to act on behalf of the commission as their secretary and staff, and then the Director may appoint a designee to act as a secretary for the commission and so on and so forth. So that was the reason why we pulled this. Staff believes it's an excellent idea, and it provides some efficiency with our Planning Commission and allows and ensures that we do have a quorum, and so I think this is a very good change for the proposed ordinance and the county. If you have any questions of staff, we'll be happy to respond.
Mr. Chairman, I would want to point out that the one little difference between this alternate and what we might have in LAFCO is that in LAFCO, individual members have alternates because you have city members and so forth, but in this case, the alternate would be an alternate at large essentially. The person would be an alternate to all of the other members of the commission, so in the event that any one of them should miss a meeting, this person would be able to step forward and act as commissioner, if I'm not...
That is correct. That's the whole intent of the proposed amendment.
And to follow on top of that, we did hold interviews two weeks ago, Supervisor Worley and myself, by direction of this board, interviewed four very capable candidates and asked Mr. Raper to bring this ordinance forward in light of the quality also of the applicants that we were able to interview. Would have been, you know, at that time, I think we could have appointed three alternates because the quality of the applicants was very good. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I just have a question. Counsel, because there was an issue raised yesterday when we met during our meeting with counsel that there might be some concerns about the language, are you satisfied with the presentation and the understanding of the language?
We redrafted the language, and I believe RMA and our office are both happy with it at this point.
That's correct. I do appreciate County Council's efforts because I, well, they made sure we did it correctly, so I do appreciate that effort.
Thank you. No other questions?
I move approval, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Move by Worley, second by Innes. Unanimous, thank you very much. We will next move to our untimed item number 26. Bus from Health and Human Resources Development to endorse a county-sponsored health fair.
Good morning, Chairman Cox, members of the board. The item before you is a request from County Human Resources to endorse a county health fair. This would be the second year of this event, and we are proposing to hold it on Wednesday, September 30th at the Visalia Convention Center. We are proposing this year a change in that we would be scheduling the health fair in conjunction with our open enrollment of our health benefit program in order to achieve some savings in terms of rental of the convention center and also to be able to provide kind of a one-stop shop for our employees to come and get information regarding the new health benefit plan year coming up, as well as additional information that will be available at the wellness fair. This year, we, one of the key items is being able to have flu shots available to our employees at the health fair. Unfortunately, it won't be the H1N1, but we are proposing to have that at the fair, as well as other blood pressure checks, diabetes checks, other health-related venues, workshops that will provide educational information, and then demonstrations as well. Our health vendors, our Blue Shield, our Vision, would also be invited to give information to our employees. A change this year that's being proposed is that we are asking our vendors, or would be, if this is approved, asking our vendors to rent booth space, whereas last year, we provided that free to our vendors. We're asking them to contribute, as we all know what kind of economic climate we are in, and we hope to be able to generate enough funds, or the majority of funds, to pay for the health fair. The additional funding would come from other educational money through the CSAC EIA program if there is any kind of a shortfall. Our coordinator for our health and wellness fair is Ruth Medlin, our county training officer, and she is also here today, should you have any questions.
Any questions of staff?
What's the date?
Wednesday, September 30th is the date that's proposed.
I've got one question for you. What was the cost of the fair last year?
Approximately $12,000.
Okay, and so with the booth rental fees, hopefully we'll be able to cover that this year?
That's what we're hoping, that the majority of funds will come from that source.
Okay, good.
If I can, even without the booth rental fares, the cost of providing these services is money well spent, just getting the information to the people, the interaction, the training. So, I mean, as I looked at this, I thought that was a, you know, that was a good price to pay for what we're getting out of this service, as well as, you know, if we can reduce the cost, then I think that's even better. But I think last year, having looked at the survey, the positive feedbacks, I think it was, it ended up being a wonderful event and money well spent on the county's behalf.
Mr. Chairman, I would just say also, I appreciate the staff's thinking outside the box, the idea of combining this along with our open enrollment and getting as much out of this event as possible. Actually, it acts as attraction to bring more of our employees to come as well, I think, and so I think it's just excellent, and I appreciate very much your efforts.
We're not going to turn non-employees' way at the door, are we? You don't have to ask that.
Isn't that one vaccine available for senior citizens? I mean, aren't there seniors that qualify for the viral?
The H1N1?
The H1... That's the healthiest road I've ever seen.
Yes, there would be.
I wanted to ask for Mike Innes, you know, he's a little embarrassed to ask that.
You know, about 15 years ago, the county abandoned a whole... Okay, that having been said, we will call for a vote on this item. Okay, we're back in open session. We will now take up item number four, public hearing, which is a request from Resource
I'll second that.
Motion by Ashida, second by Vanderpool. Management Agency to consider the vacation of Batty Drive. Unanimous, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Russo and Counsel, we have some time before our timed items.
Good morning, Board.
Like to go to closed session and take as care of as many closed-session items as we can in the next 10 to 15 minutes, so we'll adjourn to closed session.
Britt Fussell, Assistant Director of the Resource Management Agency, and as the chair mentioned, the item before you this morning is a public hearing to consider a request to vacate Batty Drive. The request is to vacate Batty Drive between Balem Drive and Stevenson Drive in the community of Wauquina, and the request was submitted by Ken and Betty Dawes, owners of abutting property, as well as other signatures on the petition are owners of other abutting property to Batty Drive. Here's a location sketch, entity of Wauquina. We have State Route 137, goes right through the center of town, and this is a more detailed area of the section of Batty Drive that's proposed for abandonment, and you can see the partialization that's around it. Over time, there has been an orchard planted on Batty Drive, so notwithstanding the action of the board this morning relative to the abandonment, this is an issue that we are going to have to sort out and deal with at some point in time. And this is one of the residences that's in the area. This is Batty Drive, goes right... This is Paige from the Assessor's Parcel Maps, and one of the items you're going to hear me talk about here in a moment is the fact that this, these lots were created by the town of Wauquina, and they are still valid lots, and if we abandon, I keep losing my map, if we abandon Batty Drive, then we have these lots that are still existing that then have no public access. So one of the conditions that we've proposing to impose on the vacation is that these lots be merged. In other words, these lots right here would need to be all three merged together so that these two lots that will have resulted in lost access will then have access to Stevenson. The same is true here. The difficulty becomes, you've got this tier of lots, and you've got this tier of lots. Now, this whole section here and this right here is all owned by the same property owner. However, they do have a, if this proceeds and they proceed with this, they have a desire not to merge all of these together to then provide access out onto this street, but to try to develop a merge in such a way that allows them to have access on either Balem or Stevenson. As I mentioned, the street was dedicated by the town of Wauquina map, which was recorded back in 1909. Zoning of the parcels are currently A1. As you can tell from the photographs, the road doesn't exist on the ground, nor is it in our maintained mileage system, and as such, we conclude that it's not present for, present or prospective public use. And again, there's an access issue to these underlying lots that has to be dealt with. We're taking the proceedings in accordance with the Streets and Highways Code, Section 8300. A petition was filed in accordance with 8321, and we published notice and posted notice in accordance with Streets and Highways Code. We had the planning staff take a look at general plan conformity and did find that if you deal with the merger issue of the underlying lots, that it would be consistent with, or be in conformity with the general plan, and we're here this morning with the public hearing required by the Streets and Highways Code. This morning, staff, after you hold the public hearing and take testimony, is recommending approval of this segment of Batty Drive, subject to the appropriate merger of the parcels in order to eliminate those lot lines so that we do not create any lots without access to a public road. And because we've done this in the past, and we've had an experience where it took a very long period of time for the property owner that was, that benefited from this to do the cleanup measure before we could record the resolution of the vacation, we're asking that there be a timeframe imposed that this be completed by the end of January 2010, it's about five or six months, in which case, if it's not completed, then your resolution would basically evaporate, and any abandonment of Batty Drive would then have to be reconsidered by the Board of Supervisors. And that's just to keep things moving. And with that, I would respond to any questions that the board may have.
Any questions?
I have a question. Britt, you indicated that the property owner that owns all the lot, interior lots there is not in favor of the merger?
That's, we've heard that. I don't know if they're in attendance there or not, but we have heard that, that they are...
With the idea they would have access along where the roadway now is, and yet they have signed this petition to do the abandonment, so is it the concept that you understand that they're thinking about having a private access to these lots? Is that what they would be thinking about? I don't, I'm trying to understand, if they don't want to do the merger, and we can't, if we don't merge, I understand, I really appreciate this presentation over the one we had last time, but I didn't understand all these lots existed. I thought the issue was just sort of reaching across where the lots were separated by the street and then combining those two larger parcels together, not realizing we had all these individual lots. I fully understand now why the staff recommendation is the merger has to go forward along with the abandonment, and I'm trying to figure out how a property owner would have some other alternative to that if it didn't, if, I mean, if we're abandoning it, we're abandoning it.
Right.
And yet they're saying they want to use it for an access, and that just seems inconsistent.
Can I just poll the audience and see if these, these property owners are in attendance? I don't see them, so...
Are the Hodgsons present today?
This is based upon, again, phone conversations that my staff have had with them. Now, keep in mind, your action this morning, sort of, if you follow staff's recommendation on the merger, and we have this timeframe, then they're, they could keep this thing from happening because if they're part of the vacation and they don't merge their parcels, then basically the process would die, be the end of it. Getting back to your question, Supervisor Worley, there's two instances, one where it's not a subdivision like this where we're dealing with lots. We may be dealing with a situation where there's a, an aliquot parcel that's divided, identified by meets and bounds through the government platting process that maybe we're trying to provide access to, so we'll leave the road on the ground. In this particular case, we're actually dealing with a subdivision where elimination of the road would eliminate the access through this subdivision. Same concept, we want to make sure that we don't leave something without access to a public road, but a little different in the way the lots were created.
I don't really understand how they can hold anything up whenever I see all the property owners, including theirs, here on the petition for vacation.
Yes, they did sign the petition, but again, as I indicated, they have had conversations with staff that they're concerned about the merger process, and we've also tried to work with them to develop a configuration of their merger such that they still ended up with access but didn't lose this assessor's parcel block, or, let me rephrase it, having this assessor's parcel lot merge with this assessor's parcel lot. They wanted to try to keep the assessor's parcels separate, so they don't, they didn't take two ownerships, they're owned by the same person in the same vesting, and all of a sudden, merge it together and only end up with one piece of property. They wanted to maintain two...
So in essence, they want two APNs?
Yes.
And they would, they would erase those lots?
Yes, that's correct.
That would just be done with a lot line adjustment on a parcel map.
We actually have a merger process that is less expensive and a little easier process to follow.
Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. And you can use either microphone, they're both good.
I was going to use his computer there if I could, it looks like a better presentation than I had. My name's Ken Dawes. Mr. Chairman, Board, thank you for your time. I'm the one who started this, and just so that we know, it's actually Ken and Angie Dawes, is my wife, Betty is my mother. My parents do own property there, so I see how that could have been confused, but the reason for all this getting started, I never wanted to close a road. My wife and I own the three lots on the, on the left, or it would be the north of Batty Drive, and we wanted to do a simple remodel using the same line that the house is on now. Didn't, didn't move, and we had the plans drawn up, did not move that wall an inch, wouldn't have torn it down except we didn't have the foundation, wanted to go two-story. We have five kids, three bedrooms, and one bath, so we had a need.
And they would, they would erase those lots?
Yes, that's correct.
That would just be done with a lot line adjustment on a parcel map.
We actually have a merger process that is less expensive and a little easier process to follow.
Okay. Any other questions? This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address this item, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. And you can use either microphone, they're both good.
I was going to use his computer there if I could, it looks like a better presentation than I had. My name's Ken Dawes. Mr. Chairman, Board, thank you for your time. I'm the one who started this, and just so that we know, it's actually Ken and Angie Dawes, is my wife, Betty is my mother. My parents do own property there, so I see how that could have been confused. But the reason for all this getting started, I never wanted to close a road. My wife and I own the three lots on the, on the left, or it would be the north of Batty Drive. And we wanted to do a simple remodel using the same line that the house is on now. Didn't, didn't move, and we had the plans drawn up, did not move that wall an inch, wouldn't have torn it down except we didn't have the foundation, wanted to go two-story. We have five kids, three bedrooms, and one bath. So we had a need. Got a call that the deal was dead, we couldn't do it. We either had to draw up new plans, or I could petition the Board. Those were the two options that I was given. I was told that, I knew how much new plans would cost, and I was told it was $2,500 to petition the Board. Didn't feel that either one of those options were feasible for me. I knew a little bit about road abandonments, didn't really know anything, obviously, but thought I did. Asked if that was an option, I was told that was an option. So we then looked into it, got the petition, got the 10 signatures that the petition required, paid the 700, I believe it was 550-some dollars written on the paper, but that had been changed to 700-and-some dollars. So we wrote that check. That check was cashed, never got a call back. I mean, never got a call back, waited quite a few months. I'm very pleased to see that there is a timeline on this because up until now, that was probably my biggest disappointment in the deal. I have called and asked, what do I need to do? What's the holdup? Where are we going? I have a wife at home that, I'm not real big on this deal, but she's proud of me pretty good. So I would call, what's going on? What's the holdup? I was told at that point, well, there are two property owners that joined Batty Drive that did not sign, or, you know, weren't on that petition, you turned in the 10 signatures. I said, well, what do we need to do? Well, the gentleman told me, I need to go out and talk to him. I said, what if I get them to sign? What if I go do that? Oh, that'd be great, that'd speed things up if you could do it. I said, no problem, I'll do it. So I got the signatures, turned it in, I said, what are we looking at now? What kind of timeframe? And I was told, well, now that that was done, should be within a few weeks, we could get on an agenda for the Board, come before the Board. Few weeks passed, I heard nothing. I called again. Again, I was told, man, I've been meaning to call you, there's another issue, and it's landlocking these lots. I did talk to Mr. Hotsin, and I'm not sure, he had told me that a few years back, they did away with the actual lots, that they actually spent money and have had that changed to two parcels since then. And he had paperwork on that. So I don't know if that's correct or not, but I do know he told me that they did away with the lots. I believe it was when he built his home on the front side, which would be Hotsin Drive, he and his wife built a home a few years ago. I believe when he did that, he had to do some change in there. Anyway, my home, the plans that we built, my home, the existing house, apparently is 47.5 feet from the center of Batty Drive, and I needed to be 50 feet away. So the two and a half feet that my house already sits too far over is what caused all this, this time that we're spending here. I had no idea, gentlemen, that that's what this was going to turn into. It's not what I wanted, I just wanted to build something for my family. And to be honest with you, I'm really at a point where I just need an answer. I mean, I just need somebody to follow through with something, and I'm not talking about you guys, I don't know, I mean, I really feel like the RMA has dropped the ball on this thing, it has drawn, it dragged, drug out for a long time. I can go back and look at the check that was cashed, and it's been well over a year since this started. I never, I never got calls back. I always had to initiate the call in order to, to get something back from them. And I don't know how busy they are, but I know they can call me and say they're busy. I mean, you know, I, I'm almost ready to throw this thing away and go look for a house somewhere to buy because it's, it's just taken so much time. Or spend the money to do plans differently, we're talking about two and a half feet. But I just could not believe that two and a half feet, and not saying I was moving a house two and a half feet, I was tearing down a house, if the foundation was there, I wouldn't even do that. All I wanted to do was build my house where it already is. And, and it's turned into a year and a half or longer and wasting all of your folks' time. And I do apologize for that, I did not intend for that to happen, but that's all I've got. I don't know if you have any questions, and me.
Mr. Dawes, it's not been a waste of our time. Apologize for the length that it took you to go through this. I've been doing this for many years, as have a couple others, and sometimes things like this just take a long time. But I apologize for the, maybe the lack of communication, and we'll do better next time.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address the Board at this time? Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the Board for action.
Before we go forward, I would just like to make a disclosure. I had actually spoke with Mr. Dawes prior to this a while back, just to give him the guidance, just that he should come to the public hearing and speak before us. But any decision that I make today will be based on the information that's been presented by our staff and also comments made by Mr. Dawes today, so, thank you.
Board of.
Chairman, before we act, I want to make sure that we give the property owners the benefit of whatever's the least painful alternative here. If a representation's been made, that there was already a merger of all the interior lots and, whatever, this has been painful enough for everybody, so I want to move the staff recommendation, but I want to make sure the recommendation is all encompassing to allow whatever is the least painful way to get this thing accomplished. I appreciate what we have to do. Obviously, we've got to erase those lines so that we don't landlock parcels, legally existing parcels. But if you can respond to that, Britt, or.
If the Board would indulge me for a moment. First, I'd like to personally apologize to Mr. Dawes for our action in my shop. I knew this was taking a while, sometimes these are a little more complicated with parties involved, takes time to work out the issues, but I was not aware that he's been working on it for such a long period of time. And again, I apologize for that. In our initial research, we have not uncovered anything that would suggest that those other lots have been merged, but we will go back knowing that there may be something out there and dig a little deeper. It may have been a lot line adjustment or some other process, and it's just not showing up in our record search, but we'll, we'll track that down until we can conclude that we either do or don't. Keeping in mind that simply acquiring property in a deed where it may say lots 17 through 34 of such and such a tract does not automatically merge the lots. They are still, in fact, individual lots, and that issue has to be dealt with. Relative to the house being too close to the property line, it looks like Mr. Raper might want to speak to that issue as to some options or opportunities available to the property owner.
Chair members of the Board, as you probably know, the, the planning branch of RMA under the zoning code, the Board authorized the planning director to consider a 10% deviation to standards where hardship exists. If the existing home is there, and it's only the issue relating to the setback from the road, then certainly we can work with the applicant to look at the 10% deviation. And if it's only two and a half feet inside that boundary, it falls well within that 10% deviation. So what we, what you may wish to do is go ahead and consider the staff's recommendation on this, but also allow staff to work with the property owner. And if it is only that issue with the front yard setback from the roadway, there may be a simpler methodology of take care of the issue. And, and again, like Britt says, we do apologize for the long time, long time that that individual and property owner has been working on this.
Well, I appreciate Jake, your offer. My question, I guess, would be, is it best to move forward on two fronts? Would it be good to go ahead and approve the staff recommendation today? And then we have that moving forward in the event that the other one doesn't work out, they could, and then if it works out to do what you're talking about, then they may just let the thing die for lack of going through the process of doing the merger.
I think that would be the best action on behalf of the applicant.
I do have, I do have two questions.
We have a motion with two questions.
Motion with two questions. First of all, I just want to make sure that the applicant did write a check for $778, according to our agenda packet. Is he on the hook for any more money? Is there any additional costs that he will be billed for?
There is a fee for minor deviation, but what that fee amount is, I do not know.
Okay, that's, that's fair. And then the second, Britt, did you?
I just wanted to also respond that the fee that he paid covered the cost of getting to this point and getting the hearing done. To merge the properties, there is a fee of, I don't know, about $600, I believe, give or take some change for the merger process itself.
Okay, thank you. And then the second point I was just going to make was just that I would like for someone from staff, if possible, just to give their contact information to Mr. Dawes so that he can have someone kind of a point person to go with. You did get that, okay.
Mr. Claxton has already talked to the applicant, and they will be having conversations.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Worley, second by Vanderpoel. Cast your votes. Unanimous, thank you. Next, move on to our public hearing, item number five, request from RMA to adopt proposed planning development fee adjustments.
Good morning, Chairman Cox, fellow Board members. Roger Hunt, Assistant Director in Charge of Administrative Services for RMA. The item before you is an item that was continued from July 21st. And during that time, we've had an opportunity to meet with Home Builders Association of Tulare and Kings County. We met with Mr. Keenan on July 27th and had a discussion with regards to the fee changes that are proposed. And do not see Mr. Keenan here today, and he had expressed to us that he had no objection to the fee changes. The fees that are in the fee schedule, they come from four departments, Health and Human Services, which their environmental health division, and the Assessor's Office, and then County Fire and RMA. As I was saying, that there are four departments that have fee components to the schedule. RMA is the only agency that is proposing fees at this time. We review our fees for planning and engineering branches annually. Those fees are based upon cost recovery estimates for direct and indirect cost. And our review has shown that overall processing and technical review has become more complex. And for that reason, we are recommending some increases in fees. And there are a few decreases where we've been able to streamline services. Lot line adjustments, in particular, is one of them. There's administrative special use permit is another in the planning side. The annual revenue that we would expect to generate is $85,000 a year. This year, because we're partway through the year and the fees wouldn't be effective until August, October, we'd be looking around $60,000. There are some new fees that we are proposing. On the engineering side, there's the rechecking of improvement plans, and there's also the inspection only on private vehicle or access improvement. And then there are a number of new fees on the planning side. And what it means is that there are activities that we've been performing where we haven't been getting reimbursed for those costs. And so we're asking that these new fees be put in place so that we can. In particular, there's one with the, on the planning side, where there's the Airport Land Use Commission, where there are, when it involves an action item, like the Tulare Motorsports Complex, that requires quite a bit of staff time, that we're asking $100 an hour. And then there are also some fees where there were flat fees, that we're now asking those be changed to the $100 per hour fee, again, because of the complexity of the review process and processing of these applications. As a request to initiate a general plan amendment currently is $798, we're asking that to go to $100 per hour. Along with that, there are some other significant changes, primarily on the engineering side. What I had included in the packet to you is where we identify the number of applications that were processed last year to give you a feel for the dollar amount. Again, in the flood elevation certificate review, we're asking that that be increased from $91 to $140, and there were 250 of those processed last year. The $85,000 would be primarily $40,000 to the engineering side, they make up most of the fee changes. The other $45,000 would be split between project review and countywide planning. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff, Board? Seeing done, this is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to address the Board on this item, please step forward and state your name and address for the record. Seeing done, we'll close the public hearing. I want to thank the staff for bringing this to us, and I have the hopes that we might see some of these fees reduced by charging the hourly rate. I think that's probably a more fair assessment, a less complex item might take a few hours where a more complex one, several, you know, hours more. So I like the idea of going to an hourly rate. Any other comments, questions of staff? Seeing done, entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. Move by Ennis, second by Ashida. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our last public hearing of the day is a request from Resource Management Agency to receive report regarding the protest letters. If we can make an announcement now in Spanish, please, over the microphone. We will now take up Agenda, Addendum Item Number One.
Para el público, hay esta interpretación disponible, luego hay máquinas hacia el fondo para obtener esta interpretación también.
Regarding the proposed increases for Seville, Tonnville, and Tuleville.
Hay alguien que quede, quiere tocar este tema en este momento?
Anybody needing a headset, please raise your hand, and Kathy will get you one.
Hay alguien que necesite este, hay una máquina hacia el fondo, está bien? Mande. Okay, they have it, they're ready.
They have them, okay, great. Thank you. I would like to remind everyone, the public comment portion of the hearing was closed last week. Public hearing was continued open so that the results of the Prop 218 volts could be announced. Mr. Fussell.
Good morning, Board. Britt Fussell, Assistant Director with the Resource Management Agency. Last Tuesday, you held a public hearing to consider utility rate increases in the zones of benefit in the county. You have eight sewer systems and three water systems that the county is responsible for operation and maintenance. At the public hearing, you received protest letters from representatives of the Seville, Tonnville, and Tuleville Zone of Benefit. And so we needed time to go back and review those and validate those to make sure they were indeed valid protest letters. In the community of Seville, we have 111 affected parcels for which we received a total of 32 letter protests, of which we were able to validate 29 of those for 26%. So Seville falls below the majority protest threshold. In the community of Tonnville, there are 54 affected parcels, of which we received 32 protest letters. And initially, we had validated 28, but we now have a question on a couple of those. Our request this morning for the Board would be that we not take action on Tonnville to allow staff continue to work and try to double check and make sure that we have complete valid protest. Because if we, because that one is on the cusp and could possibly fail the protest if these turn out to not be valid. In the community of Tuleville, we have 74 affected accounts, of which we received 49 protest letters, were able to validate 47 for a percentage of 66%. So it does meet the majority protest threshold. So this morning, staff is recommending that you adopt a resolution that would put in place the increase for the community of Seville, would hold the community of Tuleville at the same level it was when it was adopted a year ago, and then direct staff to confirm and make sure we have valid protest letters for the community of Tonnville, in which case then we would be back to report to the Board the status of that community. With that, I would respond to any questions that the Board may have.
Any questions from the Board?
I'm, move approval of staff recommendations.
Motion by Ashida, second by Ennis. Before I vote, I just would like our translator to say, for those that have voted not to increase.
Antes de votar, para esos que están votando para no agregar...
The rate they pay...
Este, el agregó que están pagando.
Which only allows us to recover our costs.
Solamente estamos adquiriendo que tomemos nuestro costo.
It could see a reduction...
¿Pueden ustedes mirar una reducción?
...in their services.
Sus servicios.
That is not official, but that is what our staff is looking at to reduce costs.
Para reducir los costes. Are we going to do public comment?
Votes are unanimous, there is no public comment. Public comment was, period was closed last week.
Mr. Chairman, may I suggest that we amend the motion also to clarify that the public hearing is closed? The only thing that's coming back is information from your board, for your board.
Supervisor Ashida, would you so manager? And Ennis, so, okay.
Okay, so to clarify, there's no public hearing for this item today. It was only heard last week, is that correct?
There's a public hearing, but no public comment period. The public comment period was closed last week.
Okay, they're under the impression that they were allowed to do public comment today.
They're under the wrong impression.
Okay. Okay, I'll let them know.
Okay, so passes unanimous.
Señores y señoras, este, el comentario público fue la semana pasada, me están diciendo. Y en esta semana no van a poder hacer este comentario público.
Thank you, Board.
Okay. And county council, we did, were able to take care of some closed session items, but I believe we still have closed session for today?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We have items A through P on your board's closed session, regular agenda and addendum. I do anticipate that there will be some, at least one announcement, and item L is off agenda.
Thank you. We'll adjourn to closed session. Did you say you did not anticipate announcing?
Are we good? Announcement out of closed session today, Tuesday, August 18th, 2009, by Kathleen Vail Slaying, County Council. The announcement is in regard to item K on the board's closed session agenda, Atkinson et al versus Tulare County et al. United States Eastern District Court of California, case number 1, colon, 09, dash, ZV, dash, 00789, dash, OWW, dash, DLB. In that matter, the board voted to authorize County Council to defend the litigation and to defend the employee defendants with the reservation of rights on motion of Supervisor Worthley, seconded by Supervisor Ennis, on a unanimous vote. There are no other announcements.